Good evening. Can we ask someone to lead us in the pledge, please?
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Lamara, you lead us in prayer, please.
I shall will. If you would be so kind, bow your head if you'd like to. Lord, Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the coming together. Lord, we asking you one more and again to give us wisdom and knowledge on how to proceed correctly in the things and the matters of the city, Lord. God, we asking you to bless each and every one of us, Lord, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Clerk, could you precede us in roll call, please?
Thank you. Councilmember Lamar Sylvia, present. Councilmember Williams.
Present.
Member Bench.
Present.
Councilmember Scherzer.
Present.
Councilmember Ostag.
Present.
Councilmember Flores.
Here.
Member Copeland.
Present.
Mayor Moore is excused. Mayor Protem Valls.
Present.
We have eight members present and one excused.
Good evening. This is a public meeting, and the audience is asked to remain quiet and refrain from speaking, interrupting, or otherwise disrupting the meeting. I would remind everyone to please put their phones and electronic devices on silent, please. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. That takes us to announcements. I do have a couple. I want to remind everyone that your yard waste services will end next week on your regular trash day. Again, it will end next week on your regular trash pickup day. And also that City Hall will be closed Thursday and Friday of this week, November 25th and 26th, for the Thanksgiving holiday. And Mayor, on our agenda, we have a proclamation and it's declaring November 27, 2021, as Small Business Saturday.
I'd like to invite Keisha Smith to the podium, please.
Thank you.
Councilman Ostag is going to read the proclamation.
Thank you. Welcome. City of Saginaw proclamation, whereas the government of Saginaw, Michigan celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community, and whereas according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 31.7 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7% of firms with paid employees, and they are responsible for 65.1% of the net new jobs created from 2000 to 2019. And whereas small businesses employ 47.1% of the private sector in the United States, 88% of the U.S. consumers feel a personal commitment to support small businesses in the wake of the pandemic, and 92% of the small business owners have pivoted the way they do business to stay open during the pandemic. And whereas 97% of the Small Business Saturday shoppers recognize the impact that can be that can make by shopping small, 85% of them encourage friends and family to do so too. And whereas 56% of shoppers reported they shopped online with a small business on Small Business Saturday in 2020, and more than 50% of the consumers who reported shopping small endorsed a local business on social media or shopped at a local business because of social media recommendations. And whereas Saginaw, Michigan supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities, and whereas advocacy groups as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore be it resolved, I, Brenda F. Moore, Mayor of the City of Saginaw, do hereby proclaim November 27, 2021 as Small Business Saturday in the City of Saginaw and urge residents of our community to support small businesses and merchants in the City of Saginaw on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Signed by Brenda F. Moore, Mayor, councilmembers Michael D. Valls, Mayor Protem, Annie Bench, George Copeland Jr., Mike Michael Flores, Monique Lamar Sylvia, Bill Ostag, Autumn L. Scherzer, and Reggie Williams II, and our city manager, Tim Morales. Thank you.
Could you come up and get your proclamation and maybe get the council people some back?
We would like to accept the proclamation on behalf of the Saginaw Economic Development Corporation. We want to thank you so much for this proclamation. SCDC is the small business incubator, which we work with small businesses here in the City of Saginaw. We provide commercial lending, and we have helped over 80 small businesses here with our forgivable loan during the pandemic time. And we have funding available for small businesses here in the area. So SCDC is here, we're housed in City Hall on the first floor in the Office of Management and Budget, and we're in the SVRC marketplace located, excuse me, we're located inside of CMURC, which we're there every Wednesday from 8 to 4. And we're there for entrepreneurs, creating that entrepreneurial ecosystem for small businesses. So if you're in the need of funding or looking for funding, SCDC is definitely here. Our doors are open, and we have dollars available. This past year, we have had the Small Business Expo, which was in August, which we had 50-plus vendors. It was well attended. And so we have definitely created a footprint and a presence for small businesses. We have our Small Business Mixer, which is every third Wednesday of the month, and is held at CMURC from 5 to 6:30. We invite all entrepreneurs to come out and be with us and have a networking opportunity to meet some other entrepreneurs and make that connection. So we are just here. We're excited about our small businesses. We encourage you to shop local. We encourage you to get involved. We have workshops for entrepreneurs and small businesses. So if you're ever in the need of funding or in the need of some resources, SCDC is here, and we're looking for all small businesses and entrepreneurs. And we'd ask you on this weekend on Small Business Saturday to support local, shop local, small businesses here in the City of Saginaw. We have a lot of great small businesses located in the SVRC marketplace. We have some located downtown, and we just ask that you reach out and just show some love to some of our small businesses. And again, we thank you for this proclamation.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody interested in opening a small business in the City of Saginaw, y'all heard her. You've got plenty of money. Thank you.
Our next order of business is public input.
The public, the purpose of a public hearing is for the public.
Public input?
I'm sorry. Public, this is my first time, y'all.
Doing good.
Public input. Welcome to those that sign up to address the city council tonight. Please speak slowly and clearly so that you don't miss what you have to say. You'll be called to the podium by the city clerk. Speakers will have three-minute limit, which is timed by the clerk. So be sure to cover your main points. Remain courteous and respectful to the members of the public through those watching on SGTV and to the council so we can give serious consideration to your concerns. Thank you. Back to the clerk, please.
Thank you. Our first speaker tonight is Patrice Bolware.
Greetings, council and everyone. I am Patrice Bolware, and I would just like to briefly just turn your, ask you to turn your attentions to the amendment, I mean this extra attachment. I had submitted some paperwork before. I just want to do another little attachment, if you will. Since the funds are available, and I'm speaking of the ARPA funds, based on the conditions of the urban and inner-city neighborhood struggles, I would love to see a portion of the funds go towards painted murals of African-Americans, Hispanics, and biracial athletes, public service workers, and educators who have paved the way in the poverty-stricken areas deemed as the north and east side of the City of Saginaw, Michigan. We want those who are yet living to be able to bear witness to this great honor, want to encourage and we want to give encouragement and hope to the youth of today who is multi-talented, to show them that people who look like them came from the same neighborhoods, that one day they can too be superstars from the choices in the hood instead of being on billboards that states rest in peace. Hopefully, this will influence our youth to make wiser choices and to be determined to be successful, to make this city proud of them. This can also remind the youth that they too possess greatness and that they're to have dreams that can become realities. It's about being recognized and in living years. It is our intentions to speak to business owners and county land bank to get permission to place murals on the sides and backs of these buildings located in the mentioned areas. If Project Unify is awarded ARPA funding, I'm willing to contribute part of it to paint and the scaffolding. However, we are asking for an additional amount, and you can see the amount. We ask a couple of artists that's known locally, who have done a lot of great work down off the Court Street Bridge and all over. So I'm just trying to get an idea and just put it out, just some input, and then I'll get something together for you all to look at, and I'll incorporate it in another proposal as far as the amount, how much it really would cost. But spoke to some of the local athletes, and they are really excited about the idea, and I think it'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Amy Spatafor.
Hi, I'm Amy Spatafor. I'm the managing director of Pitt and Balcony Community Theater, proud resident of the City of Saginaw, avidly engaged in the arts and culture scene on the local, regional, and state levels, and a fierce advocate for using arts and culture as a tool to create well-rounded programs which address all the needs of our city. For too long, arts and culture has been looked at as another pot into which we put funds, usually extra funds. For too long, arts and culture has been an afterthought. What if we changed our mind, changed our thinking around arts and culture? Instead of it being a jar we threw our pocket change into that we can use for a special occasion every once in a while? Let's think of it as a tool, like a Swiss Army knife, that we never leave the house without because we know that no matter what the problem, there's something in our back pocket that can help make it easier to handle. Arts and culture is a tool that can be used to solve problems, like using public art to help deter crime. Arts and culture are a tool that can help achieve goals, like providing entertainment opportunities, creative outlets, and neighborhood beautification to increase our population. Arts and culture are a tool that can strengthen bonds within families and build bridges between neighborhoods. Arts and culture are a tool for improving mental health, and one that is already in use today at Covenant to help train medical professionals. Arts and culture are a proven tool for economic development. A dynamic and vibrant city encourages visitors, encourages visitors, and gives residents a reason to stay. You should each have a copy of my proposal, which details a four-phase plan to integrate arts and culture initiatives into each of the priorities you have already identified for ARPA funds. I would first like to point out what this proposal is not. It is not a proposal to give funds directly to arts and culture organizations for one-time unsustainable projects. It is not intended as a way to prop up artists or arts organizations and allow them to remain in a bucket of nice-to-haves and, if only there wasn't a tax cap, wish lists. At less than 2% of Saginaw's total ARPA distribution, it is also not an exorbitant or unreasonable request for the type of collaborative and transformative programs it will create. Now, what this proposal is, is a job creator. It is an opportunity for collaboration among arts organizations, yes, but also among community organizations, city departments and commissions, corporate stakeholders, the county government, and more. It will allow us to build a foundation required to leverage further funds from the state and federal governments, and it is an opportunity for Saginaw to become a model both regionally and statewide for creative problem-solving, cultural engagement, artful collaboration, and opportunity building. When you have the opportunity to look over the proposal in front of you, try to look at it like a brand-new Swiss Army knife. Each bullet point is like pulling out a different implement from that bright bread case. I encourage you to let your imagination run wild with all of the things you can achieve with this shiny new tool in your back pocket. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tanya Welch.
Greetings, Tanya Welch, lifelong resident of this community. And I'm here before you, just to, again, ask or demand some type of process because it appears from the last meeting that we still chasing our tails as far as how we're going, or what this look like to the community. And Councilman Flores, as well as Councilmember Lamar Sylvia, I appreciate last meeting that you all identified and asked questions that we, the residents, are concerned about. And at least you are doing research and referencing others' communities that are having, that have been awarded funds. So again, we are here, we want to know, and it should be a process that should be simplified. It should be a process that should be easily accessible to everyone, and it should be a process that shouldn't be competitive. It's simple. So again, we don't want these systemic failures to interfere with our progression in our community. So we hoping at some point soon, as a, I mean, like today or some, I don't know, but we need some answers. We need a process. We need it to be clear, and that's just a simple request. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kirven Merrill.
Greetings, councilmembers and everyone. I am Pastor Baba Kirven D. Merrill. I'm here representing the Saginaw African-American Cultural Center, which exists at 1014 North Sears. We were a former Church of God in Christ, and we made a cultural center out of it. One of the main reasons why we made it is because after having meetings with the community and parishioners, we found out that our community was lacking positive self-imagerity, and we use positive self-imagerity as a tool to empower the youth and adults to know that they can be the best that they can be in our community. We have gang gun violence prevention. I've been doing that over 20 years. I have a book that I also wrote on gang gun violence prevention. We play chess. We have parenting classes, substance use disorder. In fact, we run a NA meeting every, the east side group have been running there for the last two years, from 10 to 11:30. We have STD prevention classes that we teach young people, and the list goes on and on. Only thing, the church is pretty much a one-room building. So we're asking that the ARPA funds could help us possibly purchase or remodel one of the former school buildings so that we can have a bigger venue, that we can disseminate these appropriate information that would empower our community. I just love everything that I've heard everybody say. I would be willing to collaborate with them. I would surely pay somebody to paint in our building once you all help us get it. Thanks for letting me here.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Stacy Byron.
Hello, council. Thank you for allowing me to speak to the council and the public again this evening. First, I wanted to thank you, so many of you on the council who have taken the time to connect and explain this ARPA process with those who have taken stake in the future of our community. As someone who has lived in the city and works in Saginaw, who has spoken to many of you, I can't tell you how much of your time and effort means to us. These continue to be difficult times for all of us. I originally hoped that a few of my workers would come and continue to advocate for their premium pay, but a few of them have been infected with COVID-19. One young lady who is going through her second infection. Her name is Tila. Council, she told me to tell you hello. She works in the dietary department at HOI. She and her mother, who also works with us, are amazing people. They're residents of the city. They believe they are essential to the health and well-being of the community. They've held this belief for many years. I watched last week's meeting on YouTube when the gentleman from Plant Moran was listing off types of services that the facility or organization could provide to the community in order to be deemed essential. On behalf of HOI, we checked all of the qualifiers. I've heard from the National League of Cities, the U.S. Treasury Department, and a memo from Plant Moran drafted in June, which clearly states that healthcare workers are deserving of the premium pay because of the life-saving work we provide throughout this pandemic. ARPA is a response to this pandemic. Those who worked in the front lines were only fighting for COVID-19. They were also combating lost revenue in our city. All of our workers at HOI take care of Saginaw's most vulnerable citizens. As most of you know, our elderly and those closest to them often don't have a voice. Please be theirs. For the seven councilmembers who have yet to visit our facility, I extend an invitation to you. Thank you to the councilmembers who have taken the time to witness the care that we provide for our beloved Saginaw citizens. We do ask that those who are willing to take us upon our offer be vaccinated and take a rapid COVID test upon entry. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jeffrey Bowles.
Good evening, council staff. Just want to thank you all for your time and efforts throughout this ARPA process. I hate that Mayor Moore isn't here today. I wanted to publicly thank her. We met a few days ago, and you know, we had a very good conversation about, you know, the role of council and where you guys are taking the process. Just want to say thank you all for your time and your effort. I'm here today on behalf of talking about ARPA. First thing, I wanted to follow up with the city manager. He mentioned as part of ARPA, you know, he mentioned about, something about revenue loss. And I was wondering if you guys had an actual report of that revenue loss yet? Feel like that would be something that would be beneficial for the public to see, you know, how those numbers came about. Also, in regards to ARPA, as far as process, just wanted to say publicly to you guys about process, that I do echo other people that have come up here and talked about process. It would be great if, you know, you guys have done a great job of telling what you've already done, but it would be, you know, even better if the actual process would be publicized so that, you know, people would, you know, we want to start gaining back trust between the people and our elected officials. So anything you can tell us about process that would be really beneficial to, you know, this process going forward. And I also want to publicly offer my support with process, if I can help in any type of way for my organization, which is cap. I'm pledging my support to you guys today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Henry Hill.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, city councilmembers. My name is Henry Hill. I'm asking for the ARPA funds for Hill's Second Chance Organization for Youth and Adult Offenders. I feel Saginaw, the City of Saginaw, most definitely need a reentry program. And the reason I'm saying this is because we have so many brothers of color that's going back and forth to prison. I talked to a young guy earlier today, 30 years old, don't been to prison three times. And that's sad, and it comes from lack of knowledge. He don't have no education, and prison gonna become a revolving door for people back and forth of color, back and forth, if they don't have no education. And I'm asking for the fund for my program. I feel that my program most definitely worked for the City of Saginaw, is desperately needed here in City Saginaw. I thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
I am here today. This is my first time ever attending something like this, let alone speaking, so bear with me. I'm here on behalf of my sister's keeper, abbreviated MSK. We are a women's support group that strongly encourages diversity. We are spiritually based, sorry, spiritually led and scripture-based. However, we're not in a box. We encourage anyone from every background spiritually to attend. We're basically the group where women can bring all the difficult things that they're going through, and I tell them to funk it up. So there's one young lady that laughs really hard every time I say that. But they just, it's a place for women to come and just bring all their troubles for the whole week and just dump it, and all the good stuff that they've gone through that they can't really tell anyone about either because they're not, they don't really have a proper positive support system either. And again, we encourage diversity because I've run across a lot of Caucasian women who don't, they're, I really, they don't know, they're not very culturally aware, and they would love to be. But there's, it's just a thin line. A lot of people that are of color don't, it's a very sensitive subject, and a lot of things can be taken to offense, and maybe they don't know how to ask. And so it's a place to come to learn and learn answers, where we celebrate culture of all different backgrounds. And I'm asking, I didn't really know that I was supposed to do something about asking for funding for that, but that as well. And I'm asking if there are anything that you guys, if there's anything that you have in place for other groups that embrace culture and diversity so that everyone can be culturally aware, because there's so many children, my two girls included, that are ages five and eight, and they dealt with on a regular basis, not too often now that I've switched schools for them, where they deal with children that have parents or relatives that are not very culturally aware, and so therefore they are not very culturally sensitive. And so then my children and other children alike end up having to take the brunt and the pain and the hurt, and they don't know, and now they're questioning themselves, and it could be so simple potentially. Think if we knew better, we would do better. And thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tarsha Works.
Hello, my council friends. How are you?
Hello. How are you?
Again, I'm here. I just want to thank you for everything that you've been doing and considering all of the requests from the nonprofits, the business, the community as a whole. And I'm here on behalf of nonprofits, preferably the Nave and Ashrat Cove. We have pretty much been working diligently, trying to create a new sense of community and unity here in the City of Saginaw. As far as process, I know that's been addressed already, but there needs to be, if you could be so kind to have a simplified process that's not competitive as far as, you know, with this being a one-time ordeal for the entire community, this is new to everybody. We understand that processes will simplify everything as far as creating a sense of organization and a sense of urgency when reviewing the QCTs for the census tract. And we have reviewed that census tract. I'm sure you all have as well. We understand what everyone else is doing throughout the entire state, but again, keep Saginaw in mind because Saginaw has the highest crime rate. We have a lot of problems. You know, every other night, there's shooting. We have a lot of problems, you know, every other night there's shooting, every other day there's shooting in the communities when you're driving down the main streets. You know, it's beginning to be unbearable, and I believe this as well as other of my other colleagues in the other nonprofits whom we've been working with diligently and having communication with, that there needs to be something done as far as to curb that violence. After-school programs need to be more prevalent and exist, and I understand the importance of collaboration, but in collaboration, keep in mind that every specific service nonprofit is a little bit different, and they all have their uniqueness and their services that they provide. And as a community, and as far as moving forward, we need to work together, I mean, really work together. And if we could ask that there be some type of forum where you would open it up to the community once again, so you could get more input from those citizens, those taxpayers that may not be able to attend these meetings because of work. And so again, keep in mind when you're making your decision, do it fairly, do it equally across the board, because again, this is a one-time ordeal. And keep in mind, you are in the positions of power as far as speaking for the voice of our community, and we, the nonprofits and the business owners, are out here working diligently with the community. And in order to make a difference, we need to work together, and we need to all step up and do what we can on our part in fairness. Thank you.
Thank you.
And our final speaker tonight is Audrey Beatty.
Good evening. Respect to all to whom respect is due. I'm sure you remember me. Over the past few years, since having returned to the city, I've noticed on several occasions when it comes to funding issues. First of all, because I've been so involved in such a variety of projects, I'm not going to try to limit my dissertation or whatever to tonight to one area, but I will just kind of touch upon some of the things that I do real, I have at heart at this point. But first of all, before I go any further, I don't know whose idea it was to limit people to three minutes, but when you have something meaningful to say, three minutes is certainly not enough. And I think it's inadequate when you have a special project such as this, when you have special funding issues. I think you should reconsider that time, that time limit. And, okay, so much for that. I'm going to state, my primary concern focuses on the needs for seniors on the east side of the river. Another concern has to do with the situation, the needs that we have as seniors. How long does it take when a senior has need of repairs for housing and so forth? How long does it take to get a response? I mean, how long does, you know, in, I think, March, I was told I was number nine on the list for having my steps done, and to this day, I have not heard anything. On June 30th, when you had that all-out cry for help for taxes, I owed $1,400, I think, in delinquent taxes. I was told that my delinquent taxes would be taken care of. To this day, I have not received one dime for my taxes. Okay, I'm not going to get into that for Ms. Audrey, but I will say this. Our seniors deserve to have a decent place to grow old without having to pack up and relegate their activities to just a two, one or two-bedroom apartment. That is, when I heard that in order to be eligible for city funding for repairs, you are eligible once every 20 years, I said, no wonder the east side looks like this. Who made that rule? I think y'all need to rethink and do something because a lot, this is a new day, and a lot has to be done. I will suggest that because insurance is so ludicrous, the rates are just terrible and unfair. You can't get your roof done on a house unless you have insurance. But how can you afford to have insurance and pay the contractors too?
I motion to extend your time for a minute and a half.
Thank you. I'm just suggesting.
Well, one moment, please, Audrey. There's a motion before council.
A second.
We have a motion on the floor with a second. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed.
Okay, thank you.
I have to reset the clock. You said one minute and a half?
Yes, correct.
Thank you. Oh, okay. First of all, let me ask, when is the next?
Wait one moment, please.
Trying to work the machine.
Thank you. Okay, you may start again.
Thank you. Okay, I'll ask you at this moment, when is the next meeting that we talk about this funding, this massive funding? I want to, there should be some collaboration on the part of you and us, and I want to know when that is because I haven't seen it. In the last meeting I attended, I heard that you didn't even have, you were still deliberating over policies and procedures or whatever, and you brought these people in here, and God only knows what they were talking about, but we, the community, do not know. I think we should be, we should be informed and better advised and informed because this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. And I'm going to go back to the seniors. What I was going to say, we need a special pool. Years ago, there was a special pool for automobile insurance allowances because the rates were so ridiculous, they're stereotypical. But now, we need a special pool so seniors can pay into that to the extent that they're able, so they can have work done on their houses. Then you won't have so many empty houses because most of those empty lots were a result of not having a roof. We got too many empty lots on our side of town for this city not to be doing anything. But I thank you for my time. I know y'all sick of me, but I just had, anything you can do for the seniors in this community. I'm a senior too. I'm a busy senior. I know y'all wish I'd sit up. But anyway, thank you, but I still want to know when the next meeting is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next order of business is remarks of council.
I'd like to remind the council of the three-minute limit, and we begin with councilman Bench.
Thank you and good evening. For our public speakers, thank you all for being here tonight. Mr. Bowles, you asked about the revenue loss and the formula. I believe all of that is available. I think there's a presentation from last meeting on the website. I think all that information is available on the city website, our YouTube channel. That was the presentation from Plant Moran at the previous meeting. They explained how they came to the calculation that they did and that they were anticipating like $5 million potentially per year in loss. So, but it's out there. It's definitely public. As far as process goes, I know that that's very important, and we want a streamlined, simplified process for everybody, and I know that's a lot of, you know, confusion because we still are waiting for the interim rules. But I do know that at the last meeting, we asked our city manager to come up with a framework for a community-based, maybe where we had citizens who represented different areas of the community. CAP would probably be, you know, an example of one of the organizations that could potentially come forward and be part of that group, and that we would open that up and have that outreach that way. And I know that there are some things that we are working on with our mayor, who's not here tonight, amongst council, kind of giving us assignments and tasks for us to work on, making sure that we're communicating with the citizens as well. So we appreciate everything that you had to offer and all the ideas, certainly. I want to thank Positive Results Downtown for hosting such a wonderful event this last weekend. We had Holidays in the Heart of the City with the lighting of the water treatment plant, and I know our city employees put a lot of work into making that look so beautiful. And it was really well-attended. It seemed like there were so many people there, more people there, I think, than most years previously. I think we're all just desperate to get back to some normal, you know, joyful things. But we want to just thank them for the wonderful job they did, and I want to thank Councilwoman Scherzer for the effort she put into decorating our parade float Saturday. She had her artwork on display, and it was very lovely. And I don't know if we got an award or not, but it was great. We deserved one regardless, so. But I want to thank them, and, or thank Autumn. And then I wanted to extend an invitation to everyone. We are doing a Light Up the Lee at the Lee Mansion at 633 South Washington. That's going to be December 4th, so if you haven't had a chance to come into that beautiful historic house and see all of the work that has been done there, come from 4:00 to 8:00. We're going to have pop-ups and local vendors and things like that, goodies and popcorn and hot chocolate, and it'll just be a good way to celebrate all the work that's gone on down there. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Schler.
Who? Are you talking to me?
Yes, I am.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
You got jokes.
I don't know who that was for a second. I just want to thank our public speakers for coming in. We definitely appreciate the words that you share with us, your thoughts, your opinions. We are, in all in agreement, that it is a life-changing moment for the city, and we are making sure, and I can probably speak for most of us on here, that we are doing this informed and in a way that we don't make mistakes because we can't afford to make mistakes. And there are cities that have made mistakes and spent some money inappropriately, and they are paying for it now because they have to pay it back. So that is something that we don't want to do. I just want to say thank you to the rest of council. I think everybody was on the float. So definitely was a freezing cold day, but hats off to Positive Results and Holidays in the Heart of the City Committee for what they do and the amount of time and effort that they think about it. And I think that is probably the most concise committee because they literally crossed every T and dot every I. It was an awesome event. We did not win an award, but we did get a participation trophy, so I guess it's better than nothing. And I think that's all I will share for tonight, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Haltas, please.
Good evening, everybody. We actually had a second proclamation tonight, so I'm going to try and read this for just about three minutes. City of Saginaw proclamation, whereas World's AIDS Day takes place on the 1st of December each year, it's an opportunity for people worldwide to unite, to fight HIV, to show support for people living and affected by HIV, and to remember those who we have lost to AIDS. Beginning in 1988, World's AIDS Day was the first-ever global health day, and whereas in 2021, the world's attention has been focused on COVID-19 pandemic and how it affects all lives and livelihoods, COVID-19 is showing once again how health is interlinked with the critical issues such as reducing inequality, human rights, gender equality, social protection, and economic growth. With this in mind, this year, the theme for World's AIDS Day is ending the HIV epidemic, equitable access, everyone's voice, and whereas leadership and engagement in the communities instrumental in success of AIDS response has also been a key in responding to COVID-19. We have seen countless examples of the community activism. Solidarity have once again been paramount in providing people affected by HIV with information, services, social protection, and hope. On World AIDS Day, we remember that no challenge can defeat the unyielding American spirit. Together, we will continue to make progress in our efforts to find a cure for HIV/AIDS and to ensure that all Americans live healthier and happier lives. And whereas we are grateful for our organizations like Great Lakes Bay Health Centers that offer prevention, treatment, counseling for HIV. This includes medical care and onsite laboratory, medication, insurance, testing, transportation assistance, and other supportive services. We thank them for their commitment to support those living with and affected by HIV/AIDS. Now therefore, be resolved, I, Brenda F. Moore, Mayor of the City of Saginaw, do, by here proclaim, December 1st, 2021, as World AIDS Day. In the city of Saginaw and urge all residents of the community to join me in appropriate activities to remember those who have lost to AIDS and to provide support and compassion for those living with HIV. Signed by Brenda F. Moore, the mayor, city council members, Mayor DeBalls, Mayor Protem, Andy Bench, George Clopen Jr., Michael Thorez, Monique Lamar Sylvia, Bill Ostash, Autumn L. Scherzer, and Reggie Williams II, and our city manager, Tim Morales. That was a fast reading of the proclamation, but it is really important. I've spoke from my seat here before. This organization does some great work in the city, and if you're not familiar with their building, it's on HOI Avenue. It's the hearth home, which is run by Great Lakes Bay Health Centers, and that's where they can provide all of this information for you, whether you think you've been infected or maybe you just don't know, or education to keep yourself healthy and from getting AIDS. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Floss.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. That looks good on you, that seat, want to say? Maybe next time? Well, thank you so much to all the speakers. You know, ARPA will always be, for the next couple of years, the thing that we're going to have to look at closely, give straight facts to our public, and move on. Like the city manager said last week, there has been no council member that had motioned to spend any of the funds yet. So it's incumbent upon us, it's our responsibility, you elected us to take care of this issue, and, you know, when you're looking for a process, look to us. I do want to comment on something that Councilwoman Scherzer said. There's nobody that's spent any, or paid back any money to the U.S. Treasury Department yet. They have spent the money, but there's no process yet because we are in interim final rules. If there is money that is spent during that time before the final rules are published, the government is the person that is responsible because they had either guided us wrong or they guided us correctly. So that is something that I encourage everybody to look forward to Googling themselves. I just did it quickly, and there's no mention of people paying money back yet. That is definitely a scare tactic that people are enforcing upon us to say that if we do spend this money, that we're going to have to pay it all back. It is, absolutely, if we do spend it irresponsibly, we will have to pay it back, but if we work within the rules that the U.S. government has given us, we are able to spend this money to help the citizens of Saginaw. So we have to make sure that we are speaking facts, not framing a narrative that will benefit some people and not the rest. If you look at what goes on with other allocations of funds from the federal government, that's usually the case, right? CDBG funds, care funds, they go to a certain amount of people that have ties and avenues into the city. This is a new process. As Dr. Scorsone had said on September 17th, that this is the Biden legacy issue. There are going to be questions from the U.S. Treasury Department, and there is a process to do that. We could have technical advisories from the Treasury Department, but it is premature to either tell a citizen or an organization that they can and cannot access these funds. So let's be very clear about that. Also, it's been great to be on a parade with all my fellow council members. It was good to pass out candy. My son Elliot was there. He was doing his best to pass out candy to his understanding. It was great. He had his shot for the COVID vaccine yesterday. He is nine years old, and it is definitely a hard decision, but I encourage everybody that has yet to venture into that journey to please look into information to safeguard themselves.
Thank you. Councilman, please.
Did you go ahead of my last name? Good evening, everyone. It's great to finally be back in the council chambers. I do encourage everyone, please take care of your health. If you have little ones, please watch who they're hanging around. Make sure everyone's washing their hands. Whatever is going around is still going around. It's not COVID. Well, it's the flu, I guess. That's what I had. So please make sure you're taking care of your health. I do want to start off with, one, I want to start by saying congratulations to the Getting Ahead Fall 2021 graduates through the YWCA. If you do not know what Getting Ahead is, it is a program for women in the city of Saginaw who are looking, in a sense, to grow as, grow in being a part of their community, but also taking, taking control of their finances and their personal growth. It was fostered through the First War Community Center, sponsored by the YWCA, and to see those young women today with so much pride in their community, but also in their work. It was, I was honored to be there. That's where I met Jessica. So also, congrats to Santiago. We just did the proclamation for a small business. We just had a small business open in the city of Saginaw. I love to hear it. I love to see it. Our community is flourishing. One thing we always hear is Saginaw's going to come up. If you pay attention, we are. Actually, to see the economic growth that is taking place right now, we have rebounded really well from COVID, and I'm looking forward to seeing that continuous growth. Also, thanks to the Holiday in the Heart of the City and Councilwoman Scherzer for her decoration. The one thing that I guess I'll pull away from this whole weekend, seeing the young people at the SVRC, these young entrepreneurs staying in the city of Saginaw, starting their businesses, then seeing a community, seeing the community come out for the parade, seeing everyone come out. at the SVRC, these young entrepreneurs staying in the City of Saginaw, starting their businesses, then seeing a community, seeing the community come out for the parade, seeing everyone come out December 1st through the 4th. There's gonna be the Elf at Pitt and Balcony, and then also Holiday Pop at the Temple Theater. The one thing that I'm getting right now is, it almost has a feeling that hope is returning to the City of Saginaw. And I think even as we talk about these ARPA dollars, we, what stems up is a systemic history of the City of Saginaw. And I think one of the things that I try and do is not to deal on or delve in the fear of the past, but hope for the future. And one of the things that we have to continue to work towards is the communication between the city and the community. And I want to say as a council member, if you, as a community, feel that we are not being honest with you, please continue to come to us. Please continue to hold us accountable because that is not the goal or the intent of, I hope, any of my council members to hide any truth from you. Anything that we can listen to, anything that we can grow together, I know for myself, I can speak for myself, I want to hear it because the hope is returning to the City of Saginaw. And it's only gonna happen when we continue to communicate and work together. And it's gonna be a challenge putting the past behind us, but we can do it because we're on the rebound. I believe it.
Thank you, Councilman Copeland. Councilman Lamar Sylvia, please.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you to our presenters today. A lot of questions. I really personally cannot go over each one. I do feel your concerns. I've talked to many, many of you all one-on-one. Great conversation. When we can't talk one-on-one, I set up and we have a meeting. Sometimes we have, I'd be sitting up with 20 people. And that's all right because they have questions. They want answers. And I try to give answers if I can. If I cannot, then I have to send you where you can get those answers. A lot of times, I call the city manager. I send a text. I like to text. He'd probably get tired of me sometime. That's all right. But I like to, you know, get the information back and forth. You know, that, that's the best way to do. If you don't know, say you don't know. And in regards to process, I would concur with some of my council persons. But one thing I do know, we're in the process of forming the committee that we've been talking about. And of course, that has to go through council and scrutiny. So a few things I don't like is some things I really, really like. So that is that process. And we will be opening that up to the City of Saginaw. So you all can apply to sit on that committee, to bring decisions and ideas to the council from the information you get from the city in regards to ARPA funds. So that is gonna be definitely an open process, definitely an open process. I like to say I froze on the float. I started feeling my feet probably yesterday. City manager was not there. We're hoping next year that maybe we'll have us a Santa Claus. But anyway, it was a lot of fun. And I mean, just like, we're still in COVID. I don't say I want things to go back to normal. I definitely don't want to see normal again. But to see the babies' faces, oh, wow, brought tears to my eyes of joy. It was awesome. And I told, people kept saying, we're gonna run out of candy. We're gonna run out of candy. And I said, uh-uh. This is the fish in the five loaf. Everybody that wanted candy got candy. So we probably should have went back and picked up candy. But anyway, thank you so very much for coming to city council today. I am so encouraged by you all coming and having a voice for what you feel in the City of Saginaw. Thank you so very much.
Councilman Williams.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Good evening, and I'll be short. I thought it was interesting. First, thank you for all of the public speakers that came out. Ms. Jackson, I thought it was interesting when you got up and you said you didn't know that you were supposed to be asking for money because of so many people asking for it before you. But with that being said, with the ARPA funds and the process and whatnot, I'm definitely not an expert in this. I will say that Project Unified Incorporated, for the proposals that I've seen thus far, I can say I appreciate the breakdown, the financial breakdown that you put, the effort you put into it versus just giving, you know, a blanket number of what you want, just to show us where the money would be spent, whatnot. I think that's a great approach because if I'm looking for funding, and if I'm going to a financial institution, I want to take out as many questions as I can before I submit my proposal. And I think you're on the right track with this, with this proposal versus the ones that I've already seen. So I would, I would stress to anyone that is submitting a proposal as we find out what the process is, whatnot, because those are questions I believe are gonna have to be answered. So it's good to have a head start on that. But I, I did enjoy myself on, at the parade. I was, I was one of the fortunate ones that got to ride in the truck behind the float. So I stayed warm. But it was, it was really, it was really a beautiful sight to see all of the children out, running for the candy and seeing the parents that were out there. It was just, it was a beautiful sight. And as we talk about, you know, getting back to normal, again, there's a part of normal that I don't ever want to go back to. But just to be able to see people out, that's a joy. It's almost like seeing, you know, new leaves on the trees in the spring. So it was really, really nice. But that's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Thank you. I'm gonna keep my comments short, but I would like to make everybody know that we did have a good time on the float. Most of the time I was there, I must admit, I asked Reggie to drive behind us because he knew what he was gonna do. And thank God he did because three quarters of the route, I had to get off that truck. My feet was freezing. I called my wife. She didn't answer the phone. I'm gonna tell her to come get me. But thank you, Reggie, for being there.
Not a problem.
And it was a beautiful affair for all the people that was there. I was really surprised to see how many people was out there, how many kids and how many family members was out there. It was a beautiful sight for the City of Saginaw. You know, we talk about so much negative stuff happening, but this is definitely a positive affair for the City of Saginaw. I was happy to be part of it. You know, this is unprecedented times that we're living in right now. COVID, ARPA funds, we got crime in the city. We got, we got a lot of hope. We got a lot of faith, and we got a lot of courage in the people that's in here in this room today. You guys are bringing us ideas that we would like to share, that we would like to help you guys with because it's gonna make our city better. We all know what the problems is in our city, and we all know what the solutions are. So hopefully, before this is over with, we can have some solutions to some of these pressing problems we got, especially with crime and with people doing a lot of negative stuff here in the City of Saginaw. You know, we need to listen to what you guys are talking about. You guys always got some positive ideas, and we love that. So keep bringing them here because we're here because you, because of you people, we are here. We are nothing but your representative. So whatever ideas you got, you bring them to us. We'll try to work them out for the best for the public. So keep bringing the ideas. I want to thank you for that. Thank you, too. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. We are now at the reports from the manager.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So just a few comments this evening. We do have a lot of information on our website for the, the ARPA funds. We have an ARPA tab. And also, you can find just Googling the loss revenue. There's four steps in calculating loss revenue for a local unit of government. And I believe he did go over it in the presentation at the last meeting, but you identify your actual revenues collected in your base year, which is 2019. Estimate counterfactual revenue, which is, I believe, the Treasury has identified a 4.1% growth rate. Identify actual revenue collected in the 12 months, and then you calculate that reduction in revenue. It's a fairly simple process. And there is still, we're still awaiting the final rules to complete that calculation because there were comments that were submitted to the Department of Treasury regarding revenue that may be included in that calculation that wasn't included in the interim rules. So I know a lot of local units are waiting to see if that revenue is going to be approved. I believe that's what we'll, we'll wait for as well. So that is out there. You can see that. And there are some samples. I looked in, State of Indiana has a really good example out there with a, with a calculation that they walk through. I wanted to thank Mr. Kareem Bowen. The mayor and I were on his radio show, Straight Talk with Kareem, last night. I think that was a really good show. And I appreciate, he did a lot of homework on ARPA with that. And I did, I talked to him at the strategic planning session.
Yes.
As well. So appreciate that. And we did, I did talk to him about potentially going on that show on a regular basis, which I do with WSGW, I think is a sister station. I go on there quarterly with, on Art Lewis's show. That's next week. So you can tune in. We may try to schedule that with him as well for the future. And also appreciate Mr. Bowles mentioning the meeting he had with the mayor. And I know the mayor is meeting with other people, as you all are, like Councilman Lamar Sylvia said. And like, as she mentioned, if you have people, never be afraid to admit you don't have the answer to something. Send the question in, and we'll, we'll research that for you, get the information that you need. We, as several council members said, we are taking our time to be thoughtful with this. And I look back on some of the other things. Most recently, everything isn't always going to be perfect, but I believe that many of the members on this, were on this council when we did put together the marijuana retail establishment ordinance. So there can always be issues with you do that, but we heard similar things when we were going through that process of why were we taking so long? What were we looking at? And there was a lot of pressure with that. We took, I think, maybe a year to put that together, receiving input and studying. And I'm, I'm happy to say, we are one of the few communities that hasn't been sued for our ordinance, which, when we looked at it, there were several lawsuits for communities that did put that together. So I think that timely approach is, is proven to be successful for the City of Saginaw. There, for ARPA, I would, I would not say if the federal government doesn't have rules in place, then go ahead and spend. And if they change the rule later, then it's their fault. I don't think that's the way the feds usually work with their funding. And we've, as I mentioned before, years ago, Saginaw has had to pay back federal funds. But we do know that there are approved expenditures already. So you certainly could follow those approved guidelines that are there and, and spend funds. We know what those are, and we do know some other ones that currently are not approved, but there may be, those may be approved at a later date once they issue the final rules. So I think it's true to say that you could, you can definitely spend funds now based upon what we already know. But we, we will know more later. And there are a lot of things that, that can be done. On the radio show, we did, Mr. Bowen did talk about something that I believe Saginaw County is doing where they have a pitch session that might be something that's interest to council after, after the step that you take of actually allocating to the categories, and then you know what you're going to spend on each area. So I think that's something that you could do as well. With that, we did have our city-county school liaison meeting last week. And maybe Mayor Protem Bowles or Councilmember Bench will report out on that under the committee reports. But we did talk about how we can work with the county and the city, the county and the schools on projects as well. Think there's an opportunity for us to leverage funds there. And I did want to add, there is, there is, in fact, currently a lawsuit even in the state of Michigan for use of ARPA funds. So that is something that a lot of organizations are looking at. I won't mention the specific case or the local unit, but many of you probably are aware of that case as well. And finally, I do want to remind council members, we do have some availability for council members to tour the water plant, to learn more about that. We have Paul Reinscher, Director Water, Waste, Water and Waste Water Treatment Services has put together some additional information for council members to view. So if you're interested in that, please contact Vicki in my office. A lot of people are not aware that we do provide treated drinking water regionally. So most of Saginaw County, part of Bay County, and Tuscola Counties, and the City of Saginaw does own 51, roughly 51% of the Saginaw Midland Water Supply Corporation as well. So that's another agency. So we'll have a lot of information about those, the services we provide in the, in our current system for you. And I think that could potentially help you when you, we have things come before you that are for the water and wastewater system. So please, if you haven't contacted Vicki, I encourage you to do that. And that concludes management update.
Thank you. Council members, you have any questions for the manager?
I do. Yeah. I understand that there's dollars that the city receives, the county and the school. Can the City of Saginaw and/or the residents tap into Michigan dollars for the state of Michigan? And if you know anything about it, you can send, send prospective persons to a particular website, or if the city may also have that on our website?
Yeah, if there's information, we can add it to our website. The state of Michigan has a significant ARPA allocation. You all know, the governor and the legislature have to work together on allocating those funds. And I'm not sure how well that's going at this point. But they, you may notice, I'm not sure if council gets all of them, but the governor is announcing potential programs, mostly the time weekly, if not more often. Those then have to go to the legislature. So a lot of them are proposals at this point, but we, we'll keep track of those. There's also, I don't know if they're available to individuals. As you know, we've been waiting for something similar to water assistance for individuals for quite some time from the state, and we haven't heard anything from that. We did see, or I did see today, I believe, that the governor did announce that she was working with the legislature on infrastructure dollars since that bill was signed for lead line replacement.
Yes.
So that could potentially help us get that project done faster, or at least reduce that cost that our, our citizens are paying for it. So we'll always keep track of those items. As it goes through the legislature, I then think we'll have a better idea of what is available to the city.
And you also said that there are dollars that could be spent because the rules and everything is right there. But, and I know persons probably thought like, oh, okay. But there's still policy and procedure, the City of Saginaw, even if we can spend a certain amount of dollars right now, it's still, it's still a process that we have to go through or we have to hear from the city manager and I guess maybe council in regards to spending whatever funds those are that can be spent now. But it's still a process because you don't want people just come in and say, oh, let me get $100,000. And it won't be fair and equitable. We want to definitely be fair and equitable for, you know, for the ARPA dollar.
Yeah, you were right. There is, there, there are specific categories right now that even as the city, we could spend because we know, we know water infrastructure is an approved cost that you spend. You're not allocating that out. But when we talk about granting dollars, you will have to, I think it would benefit the city to engage an outside entity to set those processes and procedures, which a lot of local units are doing because you want to make sure that, like you said, Councilwoman, you're pushing the money out in an equitable manner, but also in a responsible manner where you're not just giving out $100,000 at a time without following that. Because it, no matter where the money goes, the city is ultimately responsible for how it's spent. No matter if we have a sub-grantee, if it's not spent according to the rules, then the federal government will not go back to the sub-grantee. They will go back to the city for repayment. So you're right.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Councilman Copeland.
I do, I could have sent, sent an email, but I just remembered. I was thinking about this. Have we, or- this. Have we, or in the past, have we had a newsletter from the city of Saginaw, whether it was monthly, where a lot of things that we talk about, it could just be in a newsletter that goes, either we hear about the seniors, it could, we have a mail-in, a sign-up for our seniors who would like it mailed to them, or we can do it digitally. Is that something that we can, because there's a lot of information and the reality is, is information overload. And we get a lot in our meetings, but it's good to, sometimes I want to follow up or there's, there's, there are just things that's going on, whether it be through the SEDC, we just did Small Business Saturday. Is it possible that the city of Saginaw, that can just be something we have, that our residents, we have the website, but you know, everyone doesn't have access to the internet. But there can be like a little pamphlet or a flyer that people can either stop by City Hall or sign up for the mail-in, just so we can have some information. Just throwing, I don't know, it's money, I know all those different things, but I just wanted to.
Yeah, I think it's, we do an internal newsletter for city staff that's similar to that. We do that quarterly. We could research doing something like that for the public that just talks about different sessions and different meetings and things like that. It might be beneficial. We probably would have to engage in an outside source to do that with us. We could coordinate it, just because we have limited staff. But it, it probably is a good idea. I know at the last meeting, like I mentioned in my update, we took our time with the retail marijuana establishment ordinance, but we did get an issue that Councilman Williams brought up at the last meeting and I did talk with Pastor Coleman about that issue. I contacted him. And so, everybody isn't aware, you know, when we have a planning commission meeting or what the agenda is. So I think that's something that we could try to push on. We won't be able to cover everything, obviously.
Absolutely not.
We can put that on a follow-up list.
And I only thought of it because we've been doing a great job on our city website and talking about these great stories. And I think about some of our seniors who can't see these stories because they're not on the internet and it would, because a lot of our seniors are scared. But giving them something that they can read and say, oh, okay, well there is good going on. And you can always go to SGTV.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I had a few. Why weren't you on the float?
I was, you won't like my answer because of the Ohio State score.
Aw, man. Get over that whole thing. All right. I have seven serious questions.
I've done several parades. I've been around for a long time.
Well, the kids missed you. And if we had yourself or Attorney Lusk or even Phil, that'd be great. That'd be cool. People were kind of looking at me like, who is this guy? What is he doing? And then we just kind of gave him the candy. So if, if we have a request to the Treasury Department for technical assistance, does it have to go through your office or are any of us able to do it as elected officials?
You, I mean, I guess anyone could submit, but I'll tell you that we submitted questions in May and have not received responses. So it's, if it's coming from an official source, it's probably going to be more prioritized. I know a lot of, and I think that's probably what the final, the final, final rules are taking so much time, because they did get a lot of submissions and they're trying to work those into the final rules. So I would, I would estimate that they are probably being overwhelmed with those requests at this point and, and that's part of the delay on those. But if, if there is questions, it probably is beneficial if we, if they are submitted through the city.
And then would you be able to give us that email address or contact information if we would take it upon ourselves as elected officials to, to get any type of assistance or is, there's a lot of questions coming in from different constituents, right? And so if we were to do that ourselves, that may alleviate some of your, you know, questions.
I personally, I, we can probably get you something. I submit them to Congressman Kildie's office directly.
It goes through Congressman Kildie's office?
That's where I've submitted questions in the past. I would, I would recommend that as well.
I think you mentioned the, the times that the city had to pay back federal funds. Could you illustrate some of those examples?
Ms. Jones, I would defer to Ms. Jones for that.
I think I've mentioned this before, but back in the Obama years where we received the ARA grant monies and it wasn't spent appropriately, that's when we had to pay back.
And specifically was, was there some type of project?
It was just like, it was a project that we completed and it wasn't completed in their specification. It was like, I believe it was under energy. It wasn't completed in their specification, so we ended up having to pay that back.
And the total amount, do you remember what we had to pay back?
I do not have that information offhand.
Okay. And then with the-
I would, I would add too, I think we've had some sub-recipients in block grant as well that we've had to pay back.
Yes, we have.
And another example that we're all familiar with, that's not a city example would be, that we all are aware of, is, is the fairgrounds purchase.
The other thing is neighborhood stabilization project. Well, similar to what you're going through right now with the ARPA, they changed it and we end up having to pay back for the NSP.
And that was through the Treasury Department or?
That was through HUD at that time.
HUD, okay. And then with the ARPA case that's currently in the courts, do you know where that's from, the locality that you mentioned?
Yeah, I know where it's from. I'll, I'll get with you offline to-
Offline, okay.
I'm not going to comment on another local unit's lawsuit.
We could do that in private then. With the loss revenue that the gentleman from Plant Moran had stated last meeting about if we were to allocate the $20 million or, you know, $5 million per year to, the example he gave was to build roads, like if we wanted to build a road. And I know that that was prior to this infrastructure bill being passed. But is that, are there other examples that are more relevant now or is it?
Yeah, so the loss revenue, I think there is a lot of, a lot that maybe is some misunderstanding about what that is. It that, so none of the money for ARPA goes back to, just goes back to city coffers. We can't use it to pay back our own debt. We can't use it to pay pensions, funds. We can't use it to just add to our fund balance. So though, loss revenue funds are required to be spent in the same period as any other ARPA revenue. So I think what was, he was illustrating his presentation is, look at projects that city normally does. And so he mentioned roads, but it could be anything that you normally do that, that you don't have funds available for. So could you do capital projects at the cemetery? Which we're, we know we need, we get so many complaints about those. I know you've, you've been out there, Councilman Flores, to see some of the needs out there. That's something that you could look at. Could you look at, could you look at fixing the shoreline in Jibway Island? I think that's a potential use because that's something that the city normally does, would do if we had funds. Those kinds of projects are, parks, other projects at parks that we talked about, which could we coordinate with the neighborhood groups or some of the projects out there to work on parks in different neighborhoods? I think all of those are things that are likely eligible for loss revenue and it's things that we normally don't have funding available to do.
And then when we talked about at the end of that presentation, that we weren't able to have, or to have the administration to move the funds, right, that we would need additional help to hire on folks to do that work. Are we insisting that we hire those people first before we move the money or that we would have some capacity to move the money as long as it's not too complicated of a process like the gentleman had said?
Yeah, it depends on what you're spending it on. So if it is something like a project that we know is an eligible expense that, that we're doing, so there's, say there's a park project or something like that, that we administer, certainly, that's an easier project to push out than if we're granting dollars out. So if, if you're going to be granting dollars out to nonprofits like we're talking about, that's where you need to have those processes and the review and the internal controls. So when council authorizes that kind of, for us as an administration to go forward, that's where we'll need that kind of assistance, I think, to set that up.
If we were to look at like the project Unify Incorporated, would that take additional administrative efforts or hypothetically?
It really depends, I think, on how we would, we would expend those funds. So if you are going to allocate directly, then I think you need those internal controls. If you directed, if you said, okay, council approves the project for X number of dollars that is something proposed by an organization in a park or murals or something like that, that we can work with the organization to plan and pay for, then that's much easier for us to, to push that project out. If that makes sense. You know, if, we'll need those internal controls and how do we pay out?
But if the organization has those controls, then we can partner with them?
I think we would want to, well, I'm saying if, if we work with the organization to plan the project, then we're paying the bills basically for it.
Yeah.
Then those internal controls, we can work with through our controller. Cause it's basically, then it's like a city project, but we're coordinating with the organization. And we've done that in the past even with, even when an organization raises funds, I'll give you examples of that is Friends of White Park. We haven't put much of our money into those projects. Friends of White Park has received grants from other agencies, but we manage the project. Typically, we will do the bidding and everything and then we'll get the bills and we work with them to pay the bills. It's a little bit different, but it's similar. Another situation, Northmore Associate, Northmore Neighborhood Association has donations from, I believe it's Consumers Energy for Dindorfer Woods. So the, that organization comes to us with a project they want to do in the park, then we'll bid it out and we'll manage that project in the park. And then they, we work with them to authorize the payment. Of course, we work with them on the project. They're involved step by step. So I think that's an example of how we could partner with an organization that you could do it faster than, you wouldn't need all those granting internal controls.
Okay. With the loss revenue of $5 million a year, is that, is there any type of like, like, what's the best way to put this? Is there any type of report that can, not like a line-by-line report, but is it like a specific number or is it just $5 million of broad assumption?
No, that's the calculation I mentioned. So you take, you start with 2019 revenue, then you utilize rate of increase. You look at your actual revenue for that year and then you do the subtraction. So you'll want to calculate that annually.
And that's, the estimate is $5 million, but not the specific?
I think he said 4.5 to 5 million, based on what the final rules are.
Okay. That's it for me.
Thank you. I had a question regarding, say for instance, the, the governor talking about putting a lot of money into the water systems and stuff like that and to help us out with the lead pipes. We need to find some kind of way where we hire our citizens that's in the city of Saginaw to get these jobs. I mean, how else can we have pride with our children if they seen other people from other communities come here doing the work and they drive right away with our paychecks? You know, so some kind of way, the city council and how to get with the city manager to find out, some kind of way we can make sure these jobs go to our people in the city of Saginaw. I mean, we talk about the, people not having any pride or not having any jobs in the city or not paying taxes and, I mean, they can't do that if they ain't having any jobs. I mean, with the other, the gentleman talking about the people coming back into the city, we know we got a lot of crime in the city of Saginaw. They say they doing it because they don't have no jobs. All right, we got to find a way to give them people jobs so they can be more productive members of society. And it's up to all of us, everybody in the audience too, to tell those kids they know that getting in trouble or young adults, hey, you gotta, guys gotta step up to the plate, go back to school, go get you some education, go find out about these other trades. I mean, a lot of times I think a lot of them are just fearful of just trying. But when you try something, that's when you find out if you can do it or not. And that's when you can find out and find the solutions when you do it. So I think the, we got to find a way to reconnect our citizens back to the monies that's coming back to these municipalities. So I would hope that the city manager would take a look at that and see if you can find something. In the meantime, I think that the rest of the city council should be thinking the same way so we can give him some suggestions to make that happen for our citizens. Thank you.
Okay, this is my last one. Do we know, because I believe we're at 50 open spots for our city right now?
Yeah.
For employment?
Wow.
So at this point, have we looked at, just to see what the disconnect is? Because right now, we, we're going to be hearing a lot of opportunities, but these opportunities technically can be completed right now if we had our 50 positions filled. So from HR, is there anything that we see has been the barrier of people actually getting in the door? Is it like job training? Is it the city placement test or anything like that that people aren't passing? That we could possibly provide, if you can, anyone can answer that for me?
So our biggest, the largest number of openings we have are in the more-
Labor.
Technical.
Oh, technical.
So you, we have jobs at the water treatment plant, the wastewater treatment plant. Those are two areas. Many of those jobs require certifications. There is a great certification program at Delta College. I believe it's a two-year program. Several of our staff teach in that program. That's really what we need is those, they're called operators and we need those in our water plant desperately. That's a need across the country too. It's not a, it's a, I know, we want them here. We want our residents to stay here, but that's a job that travels. That and our utility line replacement job, jobs are another one that, that we have a strong need for. We do have many jobs. I mentioned it at the, the MAC session that we had a while ago, that there are a lot of CDL positions that we have that are open. And part of that is, that's such a high demand right now everywhere. If you have a CDL, you are in high demand. So we've, I think we've had a number that we've helped get the CDL license that then go and get a higher paying job. It's, it's tough to keep those. So those are the areas. But we would encourage people to still look at the city because we have those jobs and they're going to be long-term jobs that we have here where you can make a career. And a lot of the jobs that we see coming up to the region, like Mayor Proton Ball was talking about, those might be temporary or shorter term. It's a two-year project, but you can, we know at the city, we're going to have those jobs at the water plant forever. Yeah. And we're going to be replacing those lead lines, even if we do get help from the state. We're going to be replacing those lines for the next 20 years. And we can use, we can, if you get into doing that, there are other opportunities in the city as well, once you get in there.
And, and the final thing is, I'm a part of a fellowship and a part of my fellowship is, they paid so much and I signed a contract to say, once I complete something, I'm going to, signed the contract saying I'm going to work here for so many years, I have to complete so many hours. Is that something that we can do as a city to say, to do a fair and say, you meet these certain qualifications and if you, if we pay for this, we said at Delta, if we as a city can create some kind of fellowship, you sign this contract, you said it, everyone's aware, if you go, when they go on it, you're going to pay it. So are we, could we do something like that?
Well, we'll definitely be looking at a lot of ideas. I know Mr. Reinsch, our director is, especially in that water and wastewater treatment where you have to have those certified certifications. We do think we need to look at some creative ways, like you're talking about, and how do we work with Delta College or some other areas where you can gain certifications, how we- we work with those groups that we can help kids get into that. And maybe we can work with some of the nonprofit job training programs, if some kids see that's an opportunity, go to Delta College and get that, and maybe the city put you in that kind of program and help you through it. And definitely Councilman Copeland, we're looking at things like that.
Awesome, thank you. Yeah, while we're on the topic too, and thanks for bringing this up, again, I'm gonna to mention too, that you mentioned Delta College, and I've got their website up here right now. The Michigan Reconnect Program is, Delta does qualify for that, and right here, it's a local college, tuition is free, and so you can get a two-year degree, or you can get the certifications that we are talking about. So if anybody's listening, or you know somebody that would be interested, that's a great opportunity, and that could be a tool maybe that we use. So if we are approached, and we're working on that, and they're having an issue with payment, I mean, this is a great program, and the governor has recently put even more money into the program, so. And I do know some people, myself personally, that are in this right now.
I just wanted to add, piggybacking off of Councilman, I'm sorry. Anyway, Copeland, I'm so sorry, I apologize. It's good to laugh sometimes, but anyway. I've had a lot of persons since you announced that we had 50-plus positions or jobs available, and I spoke with you, I spoke to you and Resource, and they said they do the jobs in a rotation. So they come back to me like, Ms. Monique, you said it was 50 jobs, I only saw nine. So you know, they wanted to beat me up a little, but is there a way that all the jobs that are available can be on the site? You know, not just the rotation, I know that's how they normally do stuff, but is there room to change? And because I have, I spoke to you about the gentleman, you know, and then this job, particular job for the police department was gone, but you know, he'd probably be a great candidate, I don't know, all he had to do was apply, but it, that hour where it was gone, you know?
So because of the high number of jobs we have, and the limited number of people we have in HR, we do batch jobs. Because if we, we have to post the jobs that we have the ability to fill. So if you have every job that's available listed, then you're going to age those applications because they simply can't interview, test, and do all of that at the same time. So I think there probably are some that are, without getting to every kind of job we have, like the fire department puts out a test, they put out the application, they test, and then we keep a long list of people that are available. And probably when we used to do a lot of hiring for police, we probably had a similar list as well, and Councilman Williams could tell you about. But those kinds of jobs, we do that, but we do have a lot of office assistant jobs that come open, and sometimes things need to get pushed up to the front as well. For instance, we have three, we have three people in Treasury that work the counter. So that's one of our highest turnover positions in the city, because it's one of our lower paying jobs as well for the pay scale. Those jobs, people stay in maybe six months to a year, so we have to have those posted so we can get in, or people won't be able to pay their bills, and they'll have that long line, and then you'll hear about that for sure. So it all depends on what we have open at the time.
As far as like maybe the police department that are actively looking at hiring, is that a position that could possibly stay? Is that one that could look at, maybe keep at least that one, because we definitely need that?
Yeah, well, we can talk more later about that, too, because there are different things that we are doing. We're doing something similar with the things that Councilman Copeland talked about, where we're helping people go through Delta College. So we're sure you can change that and hire certified all the time, then you could do that, you could do that faster and have that list, I think. But there's different things, the same thing with the fire department. We look for if you're certified, or if we have a fire academy or something like that, so there are a lot of variables in that recruiting.
Okay, thank you very much.
I had one last. We had talked, I think, two or three meetings before about, there are 468 staff members in the city, is that correct? Is it give or take, or is that close to?
Yeah, that's about right.
And then we'd also talked that, you know, we are all employed, and then also the city manager, somebody during that meeting, and that was a closed session, so I won't say who, but said that the city manager was not essential. I don't think, I don't agree with that person. I would, I think they owe you an apology. But how many of those do we believe had been frontline workers that had dealt with our citizens who were COVID infected? That include fire, police, water, administrative staff? Of those 468, how many of those folks do you believe had kind of put themselves at risk?
Well, I couldn't say for sure who, you know, for sure that someone did, but basically all of our staff interact with the public daily. So once we reopen, even prior to reopening, they would have been interacted throughout the COVID pandemic, public safety, police and fire, and our water treatment division. Because the rule came in that we had to turn on all the water, we had to do all the water services, water treatment was going into homes immediately as well when the pandemic started. So even before we reopened, that was the case. And then we reopened, I think, I would say before most other local units of government, and then everybody was interacting with the public on a daily basis. And I do say, I mentioned our Treasury staff at the counter, and people don't think about that, but they probably interact with more people than.
They touched the money that people had to give to them, yeah?
We have hundreds and hundreds of people that come through Treasury every day, and then the water counter. And I would also add, I know the clerk is looking at me, but we had three elections that they ran during COVID as well, so they had all of that face-to-face interaction, and we had record turnout, as you mentioned. So we had a lot of people, we had a lot of people just in City Hall. I know you guys remember from the election, the line was to the door, so everyone had contact, I would say.
All right, and those all qualify because they're under the city administration for premium pay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Madam Clerk? Thing we do with the city manager, thing we didn't grilled him, we didn't grilled him, all we knew now, put a bun and some barbecue sauce on him.
Your next order of business is the consent agenda.
The consent agenda has been on TV, and is available at the City Hall, on the city website, and on SGT TV and Channel 191. I would entertain a motion.
I motion to approve the consent agenda with exceptions.
Second?
We have a motion and support.
Are there any exceptions?
Are there any exceptions?
Yes. Six.
Any other exceptions? Saying no. Would you like to, I'm sorry, six.
She said six.
Yeah, she said six.
Got that noted. Are you ready for a vote?
Yes. All in favor of the consent agenda except for six, please signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion passed. Number six?
Number six is to approve the purchase with Drager Incorporated, a for $114,000 for a live fire training structure for the fire department. That was Councilmember Monique Sylvia Lamar, Lamar Sylvia.
Okay, all right, just call me Monique. But anyway, I, my information, I had asked the city manager, and I just, I guess more or less so the citizens can understand this particular piece, because I asked the city manager, is this an item that could possibly be to wait and utilize probably ARPA funds since it was such a large amount? And I'm just asking the city manager if he'd explain what he explained to me.
So I think potentially you could use ARPA money for this type of purchase. I think there, I have seen another local unit purchase a fire apparatus with it. I think, I think you probably want to limit that if you want to spend money on more, on other, or other community focused based items. I'll tell you, the fire department, another piece of equipment that they do need is probably a ladder truck, and that's close to a million dollar purchase. This, we, our ladder truck is, has been in service for a long time, and that's necessary for the taller buildings. I think a couple of you went up on the ladder truck during the fire session, but that's something that I've talked to the fire chief about, and we may bring that to you for ARPA purchase at a later date, though.
Okay, thank you. I move to accept.
A point of information, they didn't tell us that it was so old when they put us like, oh, they did, I was joking.
It is safe.
A second then.
Okay, we had a motion and support to approve number six. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion passed.
Mayor Protim, you are now at board, commission, and committee reports.
Do anybody have any reports to, from your particular board that you participate in? Well, I'd like to report that I did meet with the city, county, and the school board last week. I think we had a good meeting. We talked a lot about the, maybe the consent community center at the Saginaw High School, being a junior high school and a resource center for the whole community, and we even mentioned something like having at least four of those in the city of Saginaw, maybe two on the west side and two on the east side. So we want to work with them to make sure, you know, we can get some community centers back into our communities, because it seemed like when the community centers died, a whole lot of other people did, two behind them, because we don't have any kids to learn how to do conflict resolutions and things of that nature. I know when I went to get community center when I was a kid, man, we had somebody always there to tell us what to do and what not to do, and I think it made me a better person for it to a certain extent, because I can remember me getting in the incidents, and I can hear those grownups telling me, Michael, don't do this, don't do that, or giving me positive confirmations when I did do something good, so I'm looking forward to that. So that's one thing we talked about, and.
When were you all, is that, is that particular meeting open to the public? And if so, when is the next meeting?
The next meet?
February.
In February, they have it every quarter.
Okay.
Andy, do you have anything you want to add?
No, thank you.
City manager?
No, just it is quarterly meeting, so it'll be February, and it is open to the having it at the city, at the county, and at the school.
Okay, thank you.
Any other commissions or boards?
Our next order of business is appointment of board and commission members.
Can we do all these at once?
Yes, sir.
Okay. While we entertain a motion? Okay, we got a motion and support. All in favor of us approving all five of these, please signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion passed.
Next, we have ordinance introduction. We do have one tonight. It's an ordinance to amend Chapter 12 of Title I Administrative Code by adding Section 12.043 titled Saginaw Human Rights Commission. So moved.
Support.
Okay, this ordinance would be laid over under the charter, I'm sorry.
Just have a motion. Is there a discussion?
We got a motion, any discussion?
Yeah, I had a quick question. Are, when this gets established, are we able to still have an ordinance, like, I think it was Jackson that had a penalty fee for $500 to those that would discriminate against? Am I thinking of the wrong thing? For LGBTQ?
I think you may.
Okay, well, I'm sorry. Okay, that's for ordinance and consideration and adoption. Okay, yep, I'm good, thank you. All right, move.
So I need to make a motion to lay this one over, or is already?
No, we have a motion in a second, you're just in discussion.
Okay, any other discussion? Saying no, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed.
Now we announce that it's laid over.
And it will be laid over for consideration. Hey, man, this mayor trying to get on me eight all day.
You're doing fine. We are now at ordinance consideration and adoption. We do have one tonight, is to amend Section 12.037 Saginaw Human Planning Commission of Chapter 12, Boards and Commissions of Title I Administrative Code.
We need a motion to adopt this one?
So moved.
Second? Did that been moved?
Is there any discussion?
Yeah.
We have a motion in a second.
Yeah, same thing with the last question. Would this be, we would set up a committee to hear cases of discrimination, correct?
This is the, this is the one they use for the SBD, the block grant, so basically it went from the zones to the quadrants.
Okay.
This is the Human Planning Commission.
Okay.
This is the block grant allocation, switching it from our current districts to the quadrant.
Okay, I apologize. No further discussion?
So we need to vote on this one? All in favor of passing this one, please signify by saying aye. All opposed? Y'all good down there?
He said on passing this one.
Hey, we getting it rolling, man, it's the end of the day, bro. Are you good with it?
I'm good.
All right, then, let's go. Motion passed.
Our next order of business is resolutions. Our first one is designating Travis Paye Assistant City Engineer as the Single Street Administrator with the Michigan Department of Transportation.
Need a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Support.
Motion, second it. Ma'am? Any discussion?
Is this the one? No, I'm just.
All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion passed.
Our second resolution tonight is authorizing the extension of Master Plan until June 1st of 2022.
So moved.
We got a motion and support. Any questions on the motion? Seeing no questions, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed.
Mayor Protim, you're at miscellaneous business.
Is there any unfinished business?
Yes.
Yes.
So I don't know, I mean, I want to make sure I make the motion correctly, but I'd like for council to be able to go back and look at and reevaluate the ordinance as it pertains to the marijuana establishments.
Aspect of it?
I'm sorry?
What aspect of it?
Well, I guess it would be the feet, how many feet? I'm sorry.
Setbacks.
Setbacks, I'm sorry. Setbacks. I'd like us to go back and look at that. So we won't have the situation that we have now, and I know we cannot go back and change as far as it relates to the world outreach center, but we would hope that that doesn't ever happen again, so maybe we look at that ordinance and do some tweaking.
I don't think you need a motion for that.
Okay.
I think the proper motion would be at the time if you have an amendment you want to ask staff to bring back.
Okay.
You can certainly do that. The ordinance is available for any member of council to review. The, the ordinance is available for any member of council to review.
Okay.
I, I do wanna follow with this, I, because sitting on the, oh, I'm, I'm sorry, am I supposed to do something wrong?
Well, she made a motion.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so I.
She made the motion, is, is there a second to do anything with that?
I'll rescind because evidently I did that incorrectly. Okay.
All right, thank you.
My question was regarding her motion, so I, I won't ask it. So then I guess we do make the, we make, we will make an emotion for staff to review information that pertains to setbacks regarding um, distances marijuana establishments from religious centers?
Well, and, and I would say that staff has spent considerable time in the past reviewing those setbacks. So if, if there's a policy change that council wants to make, then I think that's for you to provide us the direction. We've, we've, staff has reviewed that ad nauseam. And I, I just do also wanna point out that, that is within the zoning ordinance. So if there were a proposed amendment, that would first go to planning commission for a public hearing prior to coming back to council, so.
Well, can you all give us the steps that needs to be taken to look at that or to reconsider that? Because um, I'm sure a lot of uh, churches, religious organizations wouldn't want bars, strip clubs, et cetera, you know, right near them like that. So what, tell us the steps, I, I'm new. Tell, tell us the steps that we need to safeguard that not happening again.
Well, specifically with this ordinance, I will say that we did run a number of scenarios as we went through this process. I, I mentioned it earlier, this, this ordinance was probably in excess of a year of study. And same, we heard similar things, we weren't going fast enough because there was a, a lot of people, there were a lot of people that were interested in this. So we ran several scenarios through our GIS system that had all of our setbacks. So there are a number of setbacks in the ordinance. There's playgrounds, schools are the farthest that's um, in the state law. I believe it's a thousand feet setback. We have setbacks from, there's churches, schools, playgrounds, um, parks. I believe that's most of them, but um, we do have.
And each other.
And each other. One can't be.
So what happened in this particular case? Evidently there seems to be some controversy.
Well, this, this case, i- in this case, the um, church is farther than the setback amount for, for retail establishments was, which is a hundred feet from the location of the establishment. So it, it, it is outside of the, the required setback. So that's why um, the planning commission, planning commission approves the permits or um, the provisional permits based upon what's in the ordinance. So um, they, they did approve that, that specific one. If council members are interested, I can work with GIS to see if we can run those scenarios in their mapping system. And we'll set up a time where you can come and look at them. Because with those various setbacks, what we, when we looked at everything, um, essentially if you increased them, you would have zero facilities in the city. That, that was one of the challenges for council. And this was a, this was a council generated ordinance. So I would encourage you to talk to um, council members who were on when it, it passed. But um, when we looked at all of the setback ordinances, if we increased them and we looked at various different scenarios where um, essentially you could pass an ordinance to allow the facilities, but if you increased all the setbacks too much, you still wouldn't, you wouldn't have any facilities in the city. So maybe that's a good first step. I will talk to um, Jeff Klopsick, who's our GIS director, and see if we can run those maps again. So interested council members can come in and take a look at that. But, but it's also um, you know, maybe something where, when I talked to, to Pastor Coleman, he didn't know that the hearing was going to be there. So this might be a case where, as Councilman Copeland said before, how, how can we publicize things more? So more people know about it and, and get it out there. If you're not looking at the things and maybe you're not on Facebook or Twitter or things like that to see when things are coming up, how can we get information out to the public? We do have, with those setbacks, we do have required levels. And I believe it's three hundred feet.
Yes.
Notification.
Yes.
So that's even a far setback and the church is farther than the three hundred feet. So um, it would, it's even falls outside of that required notification.
Well, if we can just show our concern, maybe you can.
Yeah, well, we can, we can show you those maps.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so I am on the planning commission now. And that is one of the questions that does come up when the application was presented for special use. And uh, so that could be, that information should be available. I think Bob has already left, but the urban planner that was here is always in those meetings. Tim, you were talking about the GIS system too. I can't remember the exact date of the meeting at planning commission, but it is on YouTube where you can actually see them going through the whole process. So John Stempel was still here, uh, Bob Gollan was in that meeting as well. But it'll give you the idea of what they had to do. And basically what GIS does is if they put in church, then all the bubbles start to come up and it starts to create those buffers of what they're looking at. And Tim also mentioned the state statute for this was, the only thing in the state statute was a thousand feet from a school. And then the statute said, and you can also alter that. So the state said, we recommend, but you can even bring that, that down too. So it's really interesting the way the law got passed. So the city took upon itself to create other buffers based on concerns that we, we heard at. We had a committee of the whole, various other meetings, and I think that's where we kind of ended up. So we took it into consideration. Or they did at the time, cause I was not on that commission at the time.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, would a motion be appropriate to move forward with advisory committee? Okay, so I move that uh, we move forward with the resolution for the ARPA advisory committee.
I'll second that.
Support.
So we got a motion and support, is any questions?
So this committee would be made up of, would, how many individuals or?
Ten to fifteen.
Ten to fifteen, and this would be? To allocate all funds? Would have to go through this committee?
To bring back recommendations to.
To bring, to bring back recommendations to council. So I, I did send a memo today that outlines it. So I think what, the, the proper, the, this motion here to have a resolution, well, I will ask the city attorney to draft a resolution based on the memo. And we'll bring that back to next council meeting. So you can, if you wanna study that a little bit more between the two meetings. Just generally, it, it would be um, ten to fifteen members, uh, applications submitted to the clerk's office. Um, it would be a committee to bring back recommendations based upon the um, recommendations and input based upon the categories that council identified. So um, I think the, a good way to do that is we can look at um, engaging um, public sector consultants to be a facilitator for this committee, similar to what, what you all did. But generally, at that point, I think they're going, they would probably look, be looking at project ideas and different things like that to bring the recommendations back to council.
Will this committee also be able to host meetings as we have done in the past with the open house and additional open, open sessions that city council then can just attend?
Yes, yeah, I, I would, I would think that would be appropriate. And also that um, the individuals that are appointed to the meeting would represent various communities of interest. So they would be able to go to, to their organizations and bring back that input too. So you're, you're having multiple ways of gathering that community input.
So how many meetings do we think, how many meetings should they meet before we decide? This committee?
Well, I think um, I think you would have, i- i- it's an temporary committee that expires upon the time that they make their recommendation. So what we've found is it, 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 it's really depends on the people that are in the committee. But I think you can still, uh, council could proceed while they're doing their work as well. Because you know, there are a lot of different ways that you can spend funds as we've talked about. So you wouldn't necessarily have to wait for them to complete their work. But um, I would think, I've talked to people who are interested in serving on a committee like this. And I think they are interested in getting to work and, and making those recommendations.
Would we be able to amend the portion that just says when they make their recommendation? And the end would be when the, the final date of when ARPA dollars are to be used? Because I was hoping that this commission could also be the committee that reviews. And as we start allocating money, they can then do additional research and communicating with some of the organizations that we provide funding to. They could really be the hand and feet for city council that we may not be able to. And if they make that recommendation, let's say in two years, we still have some more time that they could possibly meet.
Yes.
Yeah, no, I recognize.
Mayor Protem, pause.
I'm sorry.
Okay, I accept your apology. Um, actually, as I re, I, I read, I take pieces and I read it over and over. And it is recommended by the treasury that we have three committees. So I don't know, uh, you look, you look, saw that, looked into it. I think I may have mentioned it before. And actually, this is just the motion to get the committee. Because there are so many things that we have to approve and disapprove for, before the committee is even established. Am I correct?
Yeah, so you, you could have various committees. You could have an, a committee that reviews applications. You could do it with council committees. You could, there's a lot of different ways that you could accomplish the same thing.
So we got a motion and support. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion passed. Is there any other business?
Yeah, I would.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I would motion to provide premium pay to all city staff who have been working on the front lines as first responders in the tune of nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Oh, I second it.
I don't, I don't know if it's proper or not, but.
Is it a second?
Yeah.
We got a motion, we got a second. I'd like to refer to our city attorney to find out if it's proper or what can we do with this?
I, I think um, my recommendation would be for if council is interested in premium pay for city staff to direct uh, city administration to bring a plan back to you to, that complies with the, the rules that you could approve.
Correct.
With those boundaries of nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay.
So that, that's your motion then to do?
Are you amending your motion?
Well, yeah.
Sorry, let me let you do your job.
We have a motion and a second.
We do have a motion and a second.
Pay of nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars for city employees. Now you're having discussion, so are you changing your motion?
That's what.
So couldn't it still? Couldn't it still be uh, voted on and then go through the process that the city managers did? Cause I'm all before I'm getting some money, I don't know. If we doing it backwards.
If we make a motion to approve and gonna find out that we shouldn't have done it, then what?
No, we're asking the city manager, our city attorney to look into that possibility.
Well, and, and I think that's where the clerk is asking for a motion to amend because your motion is strictly pay, pay and tomorrow, basically.
Then motion to amend to look into providing a premium pay to essential care workers that had worked through COVID. Specifically, city staff who are first responders who had dealt with COVID patients. Excluding council and excluding.
Why would we be excluded?
Uh, because we're, no, no. And excluding the city manager.
You're, I, I get, I just wanna clarify the language, cause you said first responders. Do you mean all city staff?
When I had asked you previously, who had worked with COVID, possible COVID patients, you said everyone.
Yeah, but they're not all first responders, so you, you specifically said first responders.
Yeah.
Amendment.
All those who have worked with COVID, positive individuals in the city of Saginaw, employed by the city staff.
You changed it a lot, did you?
How do you even prove that? You can't prove that.
We hit, go ahead.
Could we, could we amend it that city staff provide? Just city staff, just city staff that's worked through the pandemic, that qualify for pandemic pay?
I thought we clarified that.
Cause everyone, he told us, every, all city staff worked through the pandemic, so they were considered essential workers. So that would include our first responders, that would include everyone in the treasury department. So if we can just leave it at city employees, that would just qualify them and then exclude us and the manager as you stated earlier.
Correct.
Why would it exclude the manager?
I, I don't know, I'm just saying what he said.
You know, he said he's good.
But what would, I'm, I'm gonna defer to the clerk, what would be the easiest? What's the easiest way to do this? Wouldn't it be, or, cause I think um, Councilman Copeland's motion sounds like what, what we could do. But it's, we've had initial motion. And we've had an amendment made by Councilman Flores, but this would be an additional amendment, is that right?
Right. To clean this all up and do it properly, you have a motion with a second on the floor. Premium pay of nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars to city employees. Vote on that, get it done. I mean, and then go into your discussion and your options of what you really want to do.
Okay.
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 There's a motion and a second.
Excuse me, gentlemen, we got a motion on the floor. We got a second. We had some discussion. All of you favor the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Is that what I'm supposed to do?
Am I right?
Keep going, keep going, keep going.
Read the motion back first. This is the amendment.
Can you read the? Council members like you to read the motion back.
Read the amendment.
We're not voting on the amendment.
No, we voted on the motion.
There was not a second to any amendment.
No.
Okay? So that's, that's dead, there's no amendment. It's just the main motion. Premium pay of nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars for city employees are the, the, yeah, the premium pay.
Is there any questions? Can we go back to? My question is, how do we know what is premium pay? Is it two thousand dollars a person or what?
You have one yes vote, so now you have to ask if any are opposed.
Are you any opposed?
No.
So now we need a roll call.
All right, roll call. All in favor of the motion, please signify by showing your hand. No, I'm sorry, that's your turn. I'm sorry.
Councilmember Lamar Sylvia.
I am so confused. But I'mma just say yeah, just, cause I'mma have to say yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Nay.
Councilmember Bench. Councilmember Scherzer.
Nay.
Councilmember Oystache.
Nay.
Councilmember Flores.
Nay.
Councilmember Copeland.
Nay.
And more is absent, Mayor Protem Balls.
Nay.
Seven, nay, one, one yes, motion is denied. Can we make a motion to direct the manager to explore the idea of giving city employees some premium pay? All city employees, premium pay.
We have a motion?
That's the motion.
Do we have any support? Support? We got a motion? With support, is there any questions on that motion?
Can I amend the motion? I, I move to amend it with the exception of council, the exception of council.
I second that.
Where do y'all have this going?
We're not city employees, essential.
I really didn't wanna answer, I'm just being sarcastic.
I second that.
You want discussion on the amendment?
Yeah, is there any questions on the amendment? Yeah, is there any questions on the amendment?
No.
No?
Take your vote.
All right, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passed.
All right, amendment is passed.
Amendment.
Got to go to the main motion, which is to ask city manager to research the premium pay for city employees, which would exclude council.
I motion to.
No, we had the motion.
Second.
Second.
We have a second. We have any motion?
Point of order, please.
I was repeating the motion for the sake, for your discussion part and taking your vote.
Okay.
That's what I was doing.
We're in discussion now.
Yes.
Okay.
Let's go to Mayor Protem balls.
All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passed. All opposed, motion passed.
There you go.
Oh, it wasn't. Put in a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, we got a motion on the floor, any support?
Second.
Yes. Any questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.